To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the April 17th, 2019 Select Board Meeting to order. We have no changes to the agenda, so, and we have a couple of announcements.
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have 2019 Committee, Board, and Commission vacancies out. We have a timeline that is online. There are lots of openings, so we hope people will go online and check out volunteer opportunities. There are a couple of public hearings for the Board to review applications. And then appointments are made on June 19th. DPW Director has a brief announcement about the commercial Scale House and an upcoming temporary closure.
Good evening. Rob McNeil, DPW. Just want to let folks know that we have, the Scale House is being, or the Scale is being replaced. And right now, we're scheduled to be completely closed, or the Scale is going to be off limits on Monday, April 22nd, and Tuesday, April 23rd, to essentially be able to move the Scale from its temporary location where it's working now to its permanent home in the, in the pit where the Scale is, or the old Scale was. So, just to let folks know, this has been in the planning stages for quite some time. This was following an inspection back in November. So, we've been working with finance and town management and Waste Options and the Scale manufacturer since December to be able to make this happen and get it in place for summer. So, we recognize that this certainly can be disruptive, particularly for commercial folks, but we want to extend our appreciation for the understanding. And we've been working hard to get this completed. So, in recognizing that it's an inconvenience on the closure of Monday and Tuesday, we've worked with Waste Options to be able to stay open late for Saturday, the previous Saturday, till 3 o'clock. And we're actually open on Easter Sunday from 8 till noon when we were scheduled to be closed. That's it for that.
Any questions about that? Okay. While Rob's up there, I wanted to mention two other things that came in after the agenda was out. As you may or may not have observed, the stop signs that were discussed at town meeting are in on Surfside Road at Bartlett. And they will remain in until the Board's meeting of June 5th, at which time there will be a public hearing for you all to take public comment as to whether or not they will remain. And as a result of your discussion last week, Rob went to the HDC this past Tuesday to seek review and recommendation on the most current proposed sidewalk project from Coffin Street to Salem. And he can give a brief summary of what happened there.
Sure. So, I want to say, I don't know if John's here, but I want to say thank you to John Headn, who really helped support us in getting an application in, I say application, materials for review. So, that, and also Nathan Porter, GIS Specialist. So, we all worked together to get this package into review. Basically, presentation last night, we had a lot of good back and forth and some recommendations from some of the members and some of the people who were there from the public. And so ultimately, we're, we're planning to proceed with these guidance points and, and be able to get the sidewalk completed all the way to Salem Street by Memorial Day. So, encouraged there, and also some really good discussion about, you know, process and what's going to happen next with at least the group that we're pulling together. So, I was encouraged by that. Thank you.
Okay, this is the opportunity for public comment for anything that is not on the agenda. Hearing none. Hello? Hello? That seems better. If there's no public comment, we have no new business. So, we'll move on to the approval of payroll and Treasury warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And moving on to approval of pending contracts, are there any questions?
No. Move to approve all contracts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to consent items. Number one, will we go through them one by one?
We can do it quick.
We'll take them together.
We can do it quick.
Yeah. So, we'll take the consent items together unless anyone wants to pull any out. Any questions?
No. For anybody listening at home, they're all pretty much change of managers for liquor licenses that have been around for a while. So, I move to approve all, 1 through 4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to citizen and departmental requests. Number one, an update on the Vineyard Wind Offshore Wind Project with an update coming from Lauren Sinatra.
Good evening to the Board. Lauren Sinatra, Energy Coordinator. I am joined this evening by Hallie Backus and Stephen Welch, who represented the NPNEDC and the Nantucket Historic District Commission, respectively, in the Section 106 Historic Consultation of the Vineyard Wind Project upon Nantucket Island as a National Historic Landmark District. So, they're here to help me fill in the gaps with any details. It's a kind of a long road to being here tonight. A lot in progress, still ongoing, and to also assist me with all of the acronyms we're going to be reviewing. So, since we last were before the Board, three primary updates. The Town of Nantucket submitted comments in regards to the Vineyard Wind Draft Environmental Impact Statement on February 2nd. On April 2nd, various stakeholders representing different preservation agencies, as well as the Town and County, NPNEDC, the HDC, attended the Section 106 Consultation Meeting in Hyannis. And that, again, has to do with the Vineyard Wind's Construction/Operation Plans effect on the historic properties, being the Gayhead Lighthouse on Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket Island. And then, we're going to be reviewing just a couple deadlines in front of us being, as a result of the actual finding of adverse effect for the Vineyard Wood Project on the historic landmark of Nantucket Island and the Gayhead Lighthouse. So, I'm going to just... To recap, the Town's comments regarding the draft environmental impact statement, there were several concerns. We acknowledge that we support the industry, we support the company, we support offshore wind. However, we required higher standards for nighttime lighting to reduce the nighttime visual impact, such as aircraft detection lighting systems. And we asserted that those should be a minimum standard for all wind farm developments to our southern horizon. We were concerned with the analysis lacking much detail on the visual impacts on the Nantucket Historic District National Historic Landmark and the impact on our history-related tourism. We had issue with the visual simulations being inadequate and incomplete. We expressed some concerns about the commercial and recreational fishing activities. And a general need for consistent best practices and minimum guidelines are concerned about being a guinea pig in this learning process for the industry. And that final letter is included in your packets. It was discussed at the Section 106 meeting, which we're going to review right now, as well as the ultimate finding of adverse effects for the project on Nantucket. So, on April 2nd, as mentioned, I attended a meeting in Hyannis along with various stakeholders representing NPNEDC, the Nantucket HDC, Nantucket Preservation Trust, and Mariah Mitchell Association. A Section 106 consultation is initiated when a proposed construction/operation plan in federal waters, in this instance, has the potential to affect historic properties. Special consideration is usually given when it involves a national historic landmark, such as Nantucket. To back up, Vineyard Wind submitted their COP on December 20th, 2017, and it describes the construction/operation, decommissioning plans for the federal lease, which is about 15 miles south of Nantucket's southern coast. BOM can disapprove, approve, or approve the COP with conditions. At their meeting, they indicated that they are looking to approve the COP but with certain conditions, which would be measures to minimize and mitigate the adverse visual effects on the Nantucket NHL, National Historic Landmark. There were three aspects that were examined as part of this Section 106, including the view shed, terrestrial archaeology, marine archaeology, but only the view shed was complete as of the time of April 2nd at this meeting. So, that's what we're before you today in terms of next steps and mitigation measures. And the finding of adverse effect was, again, upon the Gayhead Lighthouse on the Vineyard and all of Nantucket. Comments from the Town's letter were reviewed at the meeting. They agreed with us on our, our decision or what we said about the nighttime lighting and the aircraft detection lighting system as being imperative. They agreed with us that further analysis needs to be conducted on the, the project's impacts to tourism, recreation, the aesthetic experience, and economics, which will happen through the next phase of the NEPA process and the final environmental impact statement. We proposed that a plan to remove the six most northern turbines as part of our plan and, as was outlined, as an alternative in the draft environmental impact statement, and that is still being evaluated. But it seemed to be a popular idea amongst other stakeholders in the room. BOM came back and said, in order to help mitigate the daytime effects, they are going to require, as part of the COP approval, the company to paint the turbines a light gray or a paint color that's been determined to camouflage the turbines as, as best as possible. To minimize the nighttime lighting effects, they are going to require the aircraft detection lighting systems. They agreed with us in our comments that said, where we asserted that it couldn't be left to the paint and the lighting system alone to resolve any and all impacts on Nantucket, but additional mitigation measures must be warranted, and they agreed, which led to the, the conversation we then had at the meeting for additional mitigation measures to enhance, preserve, and protect the National Historic Landmark of Nantucket. The next step in terms of coming to an agreement with all stakeholders in the room is through the Memorandum of Agreement, or the MOA process. So, resolution of all adverse effects to historic properties will be codified in a Memorandum of Agreement. This is primarily between the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, BOM, the Massachusetts State Historic Preservation Officer, and the Advisory Council on the Historic Preservation. This MOA is currently in draft form. Town Council has a copy and is reviewing it. The Town is a concurring party and is not a signatory. So, it will ultimately be up to us whether we choose to sign this MOA, which acknowledges that through a mitigation plan or funding for mitigation projects, any and all effects to the historic landmark district will be resolved.
Quite well, we're on that. How do they, how do they quantify what the effects are? Who determines that?
That's a great question, and we're having those conversations right now. It, it seems like there's never been an instance like this. They typically deal with cases such as the Gayhead Lighthouse. There's an impact to a specific historic structure. So, in that case, the land, the, the lighthouse will be getting funding for an app, some renovation and rehab, and some educational materials. It's usually straightforward. In terms of Nantucket, it's something that we've really had to rely upon for guidance from our SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Officer, at the federal level. But they all agree that the order of procedure that this permitting is taken is not orthodox. It seems as if steps are being skipped and being performed out of order. For example, the finding for the adverse effect was just finalized on April 11th. But at this meeting on April 2nd, BOM wanted us to negotiate and finalize for mitigative measures before a determination was even made. And they've now said that we have until April 9th to provide projects for mitigative measures. But again, the open comment period to look at the adverse effect finding is extended for 30 days to May 10th. So, this is clearly rushed. The permitting is expedited. We're doing our best to come up with ideas last minute, but this is not a typical permitting procedure. And it seems like everyone that we speak to, from our SHPO and at the federal level, they've never seen anything like this before. So, we're doing our best, per their advice, in good faith effort to put some mitigative project ideas on the table. And again, these are due this Friday. We've had basically a week to put these together and to brainstorm. And this is what we have as of now. And we're open to other ideas and suggestions to finalize into a letter by Friday. But in this letter, we are going to acknowledge that we are overall generally concerned with the process and that we may need more time. We don't truly understand the impacts until the review of the determin is complete. So, we can't provide solutions or mitigative measures to mitigate the project to the, to the maximum extent possible, which is what the permitting is in place to, to provide. So, in terms of the project ideas that have been brainstormed internally and with other stakeholders, we like the idea of protecting and preserving the entire National Historic Landmark of Nantucket Island against coastal erosion. If we keep losing land area, losing our island, there will be no historic landmark left. So, this could be funded through and against coastal erosion. As part of this effort, we would look at a sediment transport study, beach nourishment and dune restoration on the entire south shore, artificial reefs and other efforts to protect shoreline against wave action, and general support for the coastal resiliency plan. And there may be a mutual benefit to the developer as well when they're constructing the turbines, digging up sand, sediment. Maybe they can be relocating it to the benefit of Nantucket. So, that's something we're intrigued to explore further. Another idea, I think, that came from a recent Select Board Meeting was cataloging an inventory of historical downtown sidewalks. We've tried to engage our neighbors in Matticat, knowing that they're the closest location to this specific project. And they've expressed an interest in a Millies Bridge project as identified in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, as well as a Matticat Alternative Access Road. An idea for a Tom Nevers Naval Base/JFK Bunker Rehab and Preservation Project, knowing that is both historic and in the view shed of the wind farm. And then, our HDC had some good ideas, which Stephen can speak further about, but they would be to update the building with Nantucket in Mind document and for historical surveys, local, state, and federal, to update and expand. But again, we're open to other ideas from the Select Board and the community. I'll mention it in a minute if I forget. Okay. So, just to recap where we are and what our next steps. On April 11th, the federal government issued a final determination, their finding of adverse effect for the Vineyard Wind Project Construction/Operations Plan upon the Nantucket Historic District National Historic Landmark. And that is included in your packets. It's now undergoing a 30-day review period. We're meeting internally with our work group, as well as connecting with Town Council and other experts who have been involved with Cape Wind and other offshore wind activities, as well as preservation experts as well. The most immediate deadline before us is this Friday, in which we are going to attempt to formalize a letter to BOM with a mitigation package, ideas for those preliminary mitigative project proposals. And we're also going to include in this letter our initial idea, which was to set up a mitigation trust fund, which an offshore wind developer would contribute to on an annual perpetual basis, very much like the CPC. That could then benefit multiple preservation and historic structure, you know, other projects such as that, coastal resiliency, but in a more transparent, even-handed way. So, we're going to propose that idea as well, the larger picture, our initial idea, even though the developer and BOM did not take, did not seem very keen on it. We'll leave it at that. And then, the next step related to that is on April 30th. The various Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard, the tribal councils, all consulting parties in this Section 106 process will again be coming together to take these conversations further and to see where we are with this Memorandum of Agreement process. So, we are seeking, I think at this point, the Board's approval to work with Town Council to submit a, a letter with mitigative measures by Friday and approval to work further with Town Councils on submitting comments to the finding of adverse effect, which will be due May 10th. And if I forgot anything, Stephen or Hallie, please jump in.
I guess here's the question. Does Town Council, in their office, have the, they have the expertise to write the letter. Do they have the expertise to sort of know what else we could be asking for? Does anyone know what we should be asking for? Has this happened to other areas? What do they do?
Good evening, Stephen Welch. We've reached out anticipating that an expert in the field is really the counsel that we need as a resource. Actually, one of the measures that was voted by the HDC to request at the work group was that we would reach out for expert counsel, simply because this is an area of law that, the regulations are hundreds and perhaps thousands of pages, and the project itself is thousands of pages. So, it's, it's just something very difficult for us to delve into. So, we are exploring that, and we have been exploring that, and we're working on it actively.
Great.
Lauren, I just have, just a question about the letter. You, will you be mentioning that the time is a bit short, that these projects might change?
Absolutely. We are going to say we reserve the right to modify, add additional project measures as part of a mitigation package. And we're going to acknowledge, I think, that our general concern with the procedure being out of order. And we were in touch with the Advisory Council for Historic Preservation today, and it seemed as if, you know, they agreed with us 100%, and they're also going to try to lobby for an extension.
Great. And do you need a vote from us, then, to approve that letter, or no?
I think it would be helpful.
It would? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the letter?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I like, provided they get the expertise necessary and the process continues, I support it.
Okay.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Just, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number two in citizen departmental requests. We have a request from Bartlett Tree Experts for a waiver of the Town Noise Bylaw from 5:00 AM to 8:00 AM, April 15th to September 15th.
The gentleman is here. This has been a, oh, maybe it's not, maybe he's not here.
Yep. Hello, everybody. Pete Kizer. I was a little late getting into this whole, we're just backing up a second, into this whole windmill with Vineyard Wind. So, I heard a lot of discussion about visual impacts and stuff like that. So, nobody actually had the answer to how in-your-face they're going to be. So, I just wanted to bring this up for public knowledge, that about two weeks ago, we were coming back from Connecticut, and I looked on the chart, and right off Point Judith to where the five windmills are below Block Island, that's about 14 to 15 miles. So, we used to unload fish in Point Judith in the old days. I said, "You know what? Let's pull over here to the Coast Guard Station and see what it looks like." Everybody's been talking about it. So, my wife and myself pulled in there, went into the Coast Guard Station and asked them about it. He said, "Well, come on around the back here, and you'll see what we're talking about." We will see them. I mean, I just wanted to make that clear, that, get used to it, because we could actually see the, the actual blades turning at 14 to 15 miles away. And as the Coast Guard kid told me, he said, "It's about, they're about as high as the tallest building in Boston." So, you know, the concept, I think we're all in agreement. It's a great thing. Just keep thinking about it. It's something that we're going to have to get used to. So, and they say, "There should be mitigation done, these public, you know, projects that should, you know, we're hoping for." So, anyway, I just thought I'd let everybody know that you will be seeing them and get used to it. Now, one question I was curious about, the other leases that are there, I don't know, are they going to be coming in to do the same protocol as this first one? I mean, is this going to be like times 5 or 6?
And I, just to interject too, and then Lauren can answer that as well. But these, the Vineyard Wind is the project that is closest to Nantucket, so it would probably reflect that 14 to 15-mile offshore distance, similar to Point Judith, whereas the other lease sites are a little bit further away. But, well, do you want to, do you have an answer for that, a quick answer for that, Lauren?
In a short answer, yes. There, but all of these wind developers, and we have met personally with nearly all of them at this point, they're looking at this project to kind of set the precedent for how to follow. And it's interesting, they were actually asking us for our insights into the Vineyard Wind and how this has developed and the relationship with the Town, and what we've learned and what they can use to make it go smoother in the process. So, we appreciate that. I think all of the next developers are very professional. I think they have experience with dealing with impacted communities. And I think they, they know about Nantucket's importance. They're acknowledging it. And I'm hopeful that we can reach some more, minimize the impacts while maximizing the benefits for our community. That is our objective. But in terms of local permitting and federal permitting, from what I understand, it will be the same.
All right. Well, I think it'd just be a great thing if they do open their eyes, realize what kind of impact they're going to have, and come forward, good faith, and, you know, offer up these projects that you're talking about. And we talked about possibly some, you know, artificial reefs, things like that, you know, which would, a lot of fish go by this place. And if you had artificial reefs, you'd collect the baitfish, predators would come, mammals. I mean, it'd be a lot better to be looking at those windmills, but in the foreground, have, you know, a lot of birds, whales.
Seagulls diving.
Yeah, it wouldn't make it as bad. So, something like, we've talked to them also about mitigating through some of these artificial reefs possibly.
We agree, and that is, that was part of the reason we thought the, the idea for an offshore wind mitigation trust fund for the community was the best model. It would be replicatable. It would be easier for the next developer along the way to adopt that model and to support projects that are already in progress with additional funding, so we don't have to constantly go through this negotiation with one and then the next, and then the next for just these, you know, short-term projects. It's really, the way it's going is not well-suited for Nantucket, being such a unique case. But we're going to continue to fight for that model. We truly feel like that would benefit our community the best, be most equitable and fair. So, I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
And I think that, you know, that really speaks to Matt's comment on our motion, that it's important to keep all these in mind as we develop the comments further and look for additional help. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Take two on number two. Oh, all right.
Good evening, everyone. Tobias Glidden. I just wanted to, just briefly, just a general comment that I, I have a most recent climate scientist from Robert DiCanto. And he's saying, and I'll just read one paragraph, and that'll be it. Scientist behind a new study published in the Nature Journal using sophisticated computer models used to decipher long, the long-lasting riddle about how massive the most uninhabited continent surrendered so much ice during previous warm periods on Earth. They found that similar conditions in future could lead to a monumental and irreversible increase in sea levels. conditions in future could lead to a monumental and irreversible increase in sea levels. If high levels of greenhouse gas emissions continue, they concluded, oceans will rise by close to two meters in total, more than six feet by the end of the century. So you're not going to see the problems. We're going to feel them and swim in them.
Thank you, Tobias. Okay, take three on number two. Bartlett Tree Experts' Request for Waiver of Town Noise Bylaw. Is there anyone to speak?
It does not appear that there is. However, this has been an annual request, and I think we haven't had any problems with it.
It's not like they have a chainsaw at 5:00 in the morning. It's more for spraying vogs and stuff.
Yes, yes. Yep. And I do believe we've done this each year.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The request for Cisco Brewery Nantucket Film Festival, to hold film festival party at the brewery on Thursday, June 20th, 7:30 to 10:00 PM. So it's an extension of entertainment license hours. And we have Amy Baxter.
Hello. Welcome, Kristy. Our first meeting with you. This is a request we similarly had last year as well. Cisco has, in their entertainment license, we have allowed for a limited number of requests over the years for extension of these hours for a special event. They've had a couple weddings. It hasn't been something that we've had a lot of. This year, last year, Film Festival wanted to have one of their events at Cisco. Generally, these things are later because of the movies during the day, so they've requested to be later. They show a movie, have some food and some music. There were no complaints. We had no issues with it. So this is Cisco exercising the ability to request this extension.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number four, the initial request for waiver of town noise, 10 to 11, 10 to 11:00 PM for their summer event on August 2nd, under a tent at Bartlett's.
In these noise waivers, we got all these grouped together for the summer, traditional nonprofit events that have, go past 10:00 PM, so they request the additional waiver for these events. And all these, I think this one might be, we have not had this specific one. The other ones we have had every year, just to extend the event to a little bit later.
And they've had this event?
Yeah, they've had this event for years, correct. And then the other ones coming up as well. It's just a traditional request for these. And we generally, for the nonprofits, do entertain these requests.
Right.
And no issues this year with this request?
No, no.
The last year?
Yeah, correct.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Number five, request from Nantucket Cottage Hospital for the waiver of the Town Noise Bylaw from 10 to 11:00 PM for the 2019 Boston Pops, August 10th at Jetty's.
And that's for the, the tent up in the parking lot area? Traditional request.
Same. Yep. Any questions?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right. A second, Nantucket Cottage Hospital, request for waiver of Chapter 54, Open Container and Public Property for the 2019 Pops.
And that's a legal request for, since alcohol is not permitted on public beaches, if everyone doesn't know that. So we do request that this is waived, so folks can bring their beverages to that event.
Great. Any questions or motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Nantucket Boys and Girls Club, request for waiver of Town Noise Bylaw, 10 to 11:00 PM for the Summer Groove, Saturday, August 17th, 2019.
Traditional, and this one is mostly inside by that point anyway, so, but they still request.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh. Okay, moving on to the public hearings. I'd like to open the public hearing to consider an application for a new seasonal all alcoholic beverages on-premise license for PPX events.
So this request, we're going to be having two applications for the location that was formerly Fog Island on South Water Street. This is going to be the portion of the building on the corner there, if you're looking at the building on the right side. PPX, this is a general on-premises all alcohol liquor license. A general on-premises license does not require a common vicular, meaning there's, it's not an open restaurant. Food service is not required for something like this. Currently, the other types of licenses we have like this are White Heron Theater and the Dreamland Theater. So they are requesting, and they are here to kind of describe what the business plan is. They are going to be licensed as a catering kitchen as well. They're going to be doing catering out of that kitchen. They would like to have the space for special private events. This won't be an open restaurant for the public on-demand eating, coming in. If you want to have a birthday party, cocktail reception, the space would be used for that. They will be licensed as caterers, as I said, for off-premise events, and then they can obviously cater these types of events too as well. So this license will be for liquor served solely for these special events in that space.
Thank you. And for the applicant?
Good evening. Brian Swayne, attorney for the applicant. As Amy said, this is a seasonal general on-premises license. They're in the building that Fog Island prior, priorly occupied. That building had two commercial kitchens in it, two dining rooms, two ancillary storage facilities. So my client will be operating in one unit that has a commercial kitchen, a dining room, and ancillary storage associated with it. They intend to use the space, as Amy described, as more of a private dining room event space, where you could have the place rented for a birthday party, a luncheon, a baby shower, bridal shower, small events, rehearsal dinners, raw bars, stuff of that nature. So what my clients will be supplying to a third-party consumer is a licensed food service establishment and a retail Section 12 license dispensary, where they'd have a tip-certified bartender on staff only when the event is in progress. I had supplemented about 10 days ago a seating chart, so this may give you a better idea of what to expect. I don't know if you've got a copy of it. Here we are.
So this, something like this, what we're doing, obviously with building and fire for occupancy and those types of things, they need to submit all of their plans for use for the building, types of setup, with tables, without tables, so that we can review that and determine occupancies for different setups and for types of use for that building.
So that's what we did submit to both Amy and building. And as you can see, it's more of like a family event or a close-knit event, where there's three family-style tables with approximately 14 tables at, 14 seats at each table. There is a small section where there's a two-person love seat and an armchair with a coffee table associated with seating there. The proposed hours of operation will be between 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM. It's in the CDT zoning district. They don't want to operate or compete with the other bars. You know, it's just a private place that someone could rent. I think this is a very innovative use. There's a need for something like this. I'm not aware of any other establishments where you could walk into an establishment and have a fully licensed kitchen, a licensed bar at your disposal, where you could use it for whatever type of event you want to host. My clients are very ambitious, and they've been in this industry for a while, and they'd be, they'd be providing a valuable service to the community. Lindsay Daly is the proposed manager of the establishment. She recently stepped down as the event manager of the Great Harbor Yacht Club. Kyle Daly's here. He's the executive chef. He has over 20 years' experience in the restaurant industry. He's been cooking for that long. He was the executive sous chef at Great Harbor. And Courtney Miller's here. She's the former director of events at the Great Harbor Yacht Club. They're all experienced, take this very seriously. They're excited for this opportunity. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Yeah. Just, just some basic questions to understand it. You said, when you walk in, so will people be able to walk in from off the streets to whatever event is happening there? Is it 100% private?
This is 100% private.
Okay.
You couldn't, someone wouldn't be walking in and saying, hey, can we get a drink?
Right.
It's premeditated, discussed, and the details are worked out prior to the event being held there.
But you could throw a fundraiser to benefit a local nonprofit and sell tickets, and people could come in?
Absolutely.
So it's still public, not so much private?
Yeah, correct. So that, it would be like if you had your wedding at the Whaling Museum or something like that, you'd set it. But it's a smaller space. I don't think it's going to be large events, but yeah. They would have to set it up ahead of time. You can't just go, they can't just one night decide they're going to have dinner for folks, and people can walk in off the street and have dinner.
Right. But I could rent it out.
That would be a common vicular.
But I could rent it out and have a fundraiser for Amy Baxter and sell tickets and make money off of it as long as they, right?
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I have no problem with it. I'm just trying to just make sure. I always know what I'm voting on.
Of course.
And I'm sorry for the Great Harbor Yacht Club, so they lost to three really good people.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so if there are any questions from the public. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Any questions, comments, or discussions from the board?
My comment, I was, I was thinking, I was thinking along the lines, we had one earlier where it was a private club, and you had to have a, you had to pay a lot of money to be able to actually go and just buy a glass of wine. They're not in business any longer, but it was, and we had the liquor license, and I was worried. I, I'm a little worried about the privatization of sort of what are public buildings. I like that this is open, and anyone can, you know, can lease it and can do it. But I think one of the policy issues we have to grapple with is, you know, if this becomes a trend, and we're losing things that serve the public, and in turn are getting things that are, you know, only open on busy stroll weekend, or busy weekends, or it's all pub-private, we have to be careful. I'm, I'm in favor of this. It's a good thing to try, you know, for us, but I think, you know, just as a policy issue, we should be thinking about it.
Can I add one thing, Rita? I see what you mean, Matt. I think there's also a plus for something like this, because how, maybe, there's times where you go into a crew, or you go in the restaurant, and it's closed for a private party. There's not a lot of spaces for downtown people to have these type of things. So maybe this will allow the restaurants to be, it's not going to solve everything, but be a little more open to the public?
Right, but that, and that's another whole issue, is should restaurants, you know, be able to close? I mean, if they're, if they're serving a public purpose and we're giving them a public license, we could have, that's a whole nother discussion.
I think.
Whether they should take the, you know, take 50 grand for, 100 grand for a big weekend and close to the actual public, because, that's a, we should be thinking about it. I don't know what our rights are in that, you know, as the licensing authority.
Yeah.
But I think it's, you know.
I'll put that on the list, yeah.
Yeah, it's on our list, and we've brought it up multiple times. You know, is that a trend we want to be seeing more of? You know, so.
I think that is an interesting point, the closing of public spaces. I do think, though, that smaller event spaces that are, we don't have a lot of smaller event spaces that can be rented for smaller, smaller parties. So I think it could be interesting to add to, add this to the community. So, any other questions?
And I agree, and I support it. I just, I'm trying to bring up the bigger picture of, you know, what's happening, because I know, I have friends that'll call me and complain and say, hey, I always go to restaurant X, Y, and Z, and they're, it's the busiest weekend, and we want to go, and they're closed. That's not fair, you know? So, anyway.
Hopefully this will help that a little bit.
I was just going to say, I agree with everything that's been said, in that I think it's a need on Nantucket, but I did have a concern about renting it out, you know, having like the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, private birthday parties, and turning it into something that looks like the Rosen Crown versus just having, you know, like a baby shower, a bridal shower. I like the idea of that a little bit better.
But it's closed at 11, right?
Yeah. The entertainment license that we'll discuss after this.
Right.
We'll address more of that. But as you can see from the floor plan, I mean, this is a point of gathering. There's no stage or anything that they'll use or that would be indicative of having, you know, strobe lights or amplified house music, that type of stuff. So I appreciate all your comments, and thank you for the opportunity.
If there's no other questions, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four oh. We need to make the determination as well. That's a separate vote, correct, Libby? Or how do we, how do we make the determination?
I should add it to my motion.
Okay.
So I'd like to add that in.
I'll second that as a friendly amendment.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Rita.
Next, we will open the public hearing to consider the application for a new entertainment license for the same location, PPX events.
So as we just discussed, for this event space, they're looking for an entertainment license, as we call it, Level Two, meaning pre-recorded music. And they also are looking for some acoustic music as well. So when we start to get into live music and entertainment, we get into fire codes and such. So I think they're requesting, and I'll have them speak to this too, a one-person acoustic live entertainment, a guitar type of situation in the building, reviewing this with the fire department. It does not have necessary equipment to do any nightclub-style events, alarm interface, sound system shutdown, automatic lights, et cetera. And as such, there should be some sort of limitation as to what can occur within the space. And we've spoken, and they agree, obviously, this is not looking to be, you know, house music, DJ pumping, band type of location. It's certainly not big enough, and it doesn't have the required equipment needed for that in any case. So the request is for background music, like a normal restaurant, or a one-person acoustic setup for a guitar background. And then I'll have them speak to that further.
That's, that's everything that my client's looking for. You know, there's no karaoke or stuff of that nature, just anything any other restaurant would have, playing background music, and then the potential of having a one-person acoustic guitar singing, unamplified.
Do we know if, if you take all the tables out of there, how many people can fit in the building, or is that still subject to?
That'll be determined in final inspection, but that's why they submit their plans for any type of use for that space. And then the building commissioner will determine the final number for those plans.
I'm just curious if, you know, take the tables out, can 60 people fit in there? It's a small space.
The whole, the COI that was issued for Fog Island, when it was comprised of two units, was just about 100. So approximately half of that would be 45. You know, the, the variables that the building inspector will take into account are different, but, you know, less than 45.
Amy, can I just ask a question? In your comments, you mentioned that they don't have the equipment to do nightclub-style events, and essentially, there should be some sort of limitation. So is that a limitation that they have?
Yeah, it's just saying, it, you know, for record from the fire department and those types of things, they can't have a band or, you know, amplified entertainment, live entertainment. When you get to that, having DJs and live bands, you need to have an alarm system that's going to shut off, when it goes off, it's going to shut the music off, turn lights on, that sort of thing. So they don't have that sort of equipment. They couldn't have a band. A guitar, acoustic guitar is, I believe, allowable and not going to come into those requirements. Yeah.
So that's sort of their self-limiting limitation, not something that we have to consider?
Well, we do, and that was the point. They weren't asking for it, but it has to be said that it's not set up for that. And there's always concern that that's what it's going to turn into, so we just want to say it, put those expectations out there, so it doesn't turn into that. Yeah.
If there are any questions from the public, this is a public hearing. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. And any discussion or questions from the board?
Just a, just a comment. I think we're working on having an entertainment policy. It's hopefully coming, you know, this year. And I think that the public and everybody understand that because we know of entertainment policy, we have to ask a ton of questions and do our due diligence. You know, we just gave entertainment licenses to, you know, Gaslight, and so that area is changing a little bit. So I just want to make sure we think through all of that until we get our, our policies in place. But I'm, I'm okay with this.
Okay.
Yes.
Move approval? Second.
Any more discussion? Maybe taking note of the comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Public hearing number three, we'll open the public hearing to consider an application for a new common vicular with wine and malt license for keeping the beat.
Great. So same location now. This is going to be the left side now, 9 South Water Street, going to be the beat. So this is going to be a common vicular, which will be a restaurant with some seating and takeout, with an annual liquor license for wine and malt only. They are going to have takeout, and I think 30-plus seating in the building, again, based on final inspections. And I'll have them discuss their menu and their plan for that as well. So this is, the other side was requesting a seasonal license, which, just to count on that, is April 1st to January 15th, or any portion thereof. This is requesting to be an annual license, and as such, per our regulations and practices, that they are to be open annually. Any extended closures are to be requested through town administration for anything other than three consecutive days right now. And, and wine and malt. And again, this location had not had a liquor license prior to this, but it was a common vicular. And takeout, the other, one other thing, something with a large takeout service, we make sure that no alcohol is served from that location. Takeout is takeout. Only table service is allowed for alcohol service and no alcohol is to leave the premises.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the applicant that would like to speak?
Hi.
Hello. Philino Sampson. So, the, it's a restaurant serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner, open year-round. The breakfast menu, do you want me to library as far as menu?
I don't, I think we had it in the, had a look at it. Anything that you would like to add, but you don't have to.
Aside from, I've been in business for twenty-five-plus years. I've owned restaurants, I've been managers of alcohol licenses. My business partner is tip-certified and we've we've had some experience with, with serving alcohol and being responsible for it.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions or comments or discussion?
Just basic for the, you know, with the entertainment policy, hopefully we're going to do this year, and the liquor policy. I don't want to beat up on the beet, but this, we're getting close to a hundred licenses. You know, and it's going to be a hundred and five and a hundred and ten, and, you know, what's enough? How do we? And I'm for this, so don't worry with the applicants, but just something to think about is, you know, we keep adding licenses, it keeps spreading and now it takes away from, a little bit from everybody. And then we come, you know, kind of Matt, what you've been saying, two years since I've been on the board, just thinking that through. And that's why I just want to continue to push us to come up with some policies this year.
Yeah, this will, this will be number ninety-eight.
Okay.
Ninety-nine gets heard next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we, if I remember correctly, I think Fog Island had liquor way back.
Yeah, way back.
Way back.
Yeah, it's been a while.
And it didn't work. It wasn't worth, he, he didn't find it was worth
Right.
his time because he didn't sell enough and it's more expensive for insurance and everything else. So, I think they did have it back in the area, so I don't think we're completely adding any.
That's good to know.
I do think, though, that is something that the two years now that I've been on the board, we've discussed many times, getting close to one hundred, and I think we are- it's not working. Strange, okay. It's something that we've been discussing for two years, so, and I believe we're going to have it as an agenda item in the future.
Yes, it is, and I've discussed it with the state too as well, because it's something we have to talk about on a, especially, you know, different, different levels as far as quotas and and things like that as a whole.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion or motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's four oh. Approved. Okay. Public hearing number four, I'd like to open the public hearing to consider an application for a new common vicular license with a closing time of two AM for Bug and Birdcage
Yes.
at thirty-one Easy Street.
So, this is, I think we have a map in here too as well, is the building that is closest to the Steamship. It was, Townpool had a license for this location. They worked with Millie's and had a common vicular license for this location in 2016. It was then after that retail and then was empty last year, so this is going to be new for this coming year. And I'll have them describe the business as well. It's retail and a common vicular. Now, the town policy has been, as far as two AM closings, it's been allowed for the strip establishments, which are going to be between Easy Street there and Lower Broad Street. All of those establishments, from the Juice Bar to Easy Street Cantina, all have licenses that allow two AM them to stay open. They don't all do that, but they have licenses to do so. I included a copy of the license from 2016 that was issued to this applicant with some restrictions on it as far as where folks enter and come out of to eliminate some of the noise. There are neighbors right next to that as well. Also, it's adjacent to the Land Bank Park there that is to be closed at ten PM, so there tends to be a lot of folks that go over and bring food there, leave stuff there, noisy, so we want to eliminate that, so those conditions were put on for that reason as well.
For the applicant?
Hi, Brian Swain, attorney for Bug and Birdcage LLC. I'm here with Sean Dew, the proposed manager of the common vic license. This establishment has been licensed as a common vicular for as long as I've been alive. When it was Schooners or some of the subsequent establishments. The board did issue a common vic license to Townpool and Mr. Dew, I think, two years ago. Other than the public problems that Amy mentioned, I don't think there were any problems with my client operating the business there. There's no liquor to be sold, it's just a dry, family-friendly restaurant. If you have any questions for me about the legality of it, I'd be happy to answer them. And Sean Dew is here to answer any questions you have about the business.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mine's more for Amy. Are you recommending the same stipulations?
I'm going to leave the recommendation up to you as far as how you want to go with this. I would say we did have complaints. I mean, it, it's a tough area, there are neighbors, we did have some issues with that, and I did get phone calls about that as well, but if, if it were approved, it would have to be with at least those conditions, I think. You know, traditionally had been the strip, those other restaurants previously before this, before 2016, it was obviously a restaurant with a liquor license, so it was not allowed to be open. So, it is starting to creep beyond the traditional strip that was defined in the past, but we would ask that at least those conditions are put on.
Are you guys acceptable with those conditions?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
How do you, I mean, how do you do that, though? How do you mitigate? I mean, because people are going to be coming from other places in the strip over into the Land Bank property. This is going to add more to that, in that area.
Correct.
So, how do you?
I mean, it's never going to, you know, it's never going to be perfect. It's something, obviously, officers and stuff that have to deal with that at night. You know, it's going to have to be-
So, I was asking-
As far as how they are going to do it.
I was asking how they're going to mitigate that, on the things that you just said.
Right.
Yeah, basically, they're bringing them in the front door, not the side door. They're, they're sort of trying to keep them from going around the corner. Is, is sort of what we had on there previously.
Correct.
Okay. And the side door, meaning the Easy Street side?
Yeah, Easy Street, they're coming in from the Broad Street side, from the front of the property into the area. That's how they did it before.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
And I'm sorry, we have to do our due diligence. Mid-July, you know, midnight, I'm not up that late, you drive by, they're using the side door, what happens? Like, you're not there, some kid opens it up, what, what do we do? What's the?
Well, you did, like, like if someone put the, you know, their music up too loud, it'd be asked to stop doing that and it would, you know, be recorded. Obviously, something that kept up, we'd have to deal with it. You know, any sort of license violations, you'd have to have a hearing about, but it's like anything. Again, you know, the restaurant down the street cranks it up. Please turn that down, that's not, you know, pretty listen. So, it's, you know, it's hopefully, obviously, for most folks are going to be hopefully respectful of those conditions, and then obviously when staff is not, you know, we have to deal with that as it comes up. But it gives us something to obviously use if there is a problem.
I just have a question about the menu and the food that will be served. Is it similar to what was served in 2016? Is this more or less the same business idea?
It'll be similar, but not necessarily the same genre, American classics.
Okay.
The last applicant, or excuse me, the last tenant in that kitchen was Millie's, so he had his his basic menu that he had out in Maticet, so this is more American, family-friendly, kid-oriented type food.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Yes, come on up to the microphone and please state your name.
My parents, J. Richard and Carolyn Judson, are the neighbors at twenty-nine Easy Street. And they, they'll be coming to the island in June and asked if I would read a letter that they composed. They're not sure if the letter, they sent the letter to the board, but not sure if it has arrived yet, so just asked if I would read it. So, excuse me, since nineteen sixty-three, we have lived next to the building, which sits at the corner of Broad and Easy Streets. Some businesses were cordial to us and some were not. There have been problems in the past. Patrons used our parking lot on Easy Street as an ashtray. When they gathered around our car, their loud voices kept us up after closing time, and we discovered that our yard was being used as a place for leaving themselves. We hope the management will be attentive to these problems. This year, two thousand nineteen, Bug and Birdcage asked for a new common vicular license with a closing time of two AM. We support the former request, but plead for an earlier closing of twelve midnight. Mr. Dew, the manager, assures us that this will be a family business and that, that there will be no liquor of any kind. The license is for serving food. There will be music, but the windows can be closed because there is now air conditioning. We look forward to a cordial relationship with Bug and Birdcage. Sincerely yours, Dr. J. Richard Judson and Carolyn F. Judson. Just a couple of other comments. Their concern is with noise and people spilling over into their yard. You know, they've lived in the spot with, around restaurants for quite some time and, in some cases, cordial with some of the, some of the places and some not, so they just hope for vigilance and hope that the proprietors will take good care and keep an eye out for some of those problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to respond? Yep.
My client's been a great tenant over there. He's out there at six in the morning and he's sweeping the front of his store and he picks up trash that's not his. You know, he does everything he can. He does a loop around the perimeter at night. Certain things are out of his hands. People do congregate over in that direction, not necessarily from his establishment, but it's his attention to be a great neighbor and do the best he can. The Judsons, excuse me, have his cell phone number. He's always at the store. He, he won't crank it up at all or, you know, disrespect them in any way, and whatever he can do to be amenable to whatever situation arises, he's there to do it. And he would ask for the board to grant the two AM allowance.
Thank you. Can I just, sorry, Amy, you may have said it, but with the prior license, had there been any noise complaints?
Yeah, I spoke with, I would speak with the Judsons a couple of times about that, and so that's probably generally where it would come from.
Okay.
Over in that, that sense, but it's just, again, just asking for respect for them, obviously, in that neighborhood and the Land Bank Park as well, and keep an eye on that.
Okay.
And again, it obviously could come from other folks as well, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
And the prior license, that was until two AM?
Uh, yeah, it was granted in 2016, correct, yes.
Any more questions from the public or comments?
So, frame, do the windows, if there is music, just basic music, do the windows have to be closed at ten PM?
Background, for that location, I would say, yes, you know, I, we are requiring entertainment licenses for anyone with liquor. We haven't gotten as far as everyone with a common vicular. I think that possibly could be coming, so, you know, it's, it's a retail location, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be dealing with music coming outside of the premises.
Okay.
So, we can't really put, we can't say windows closed at ten PM?
Well, yeah, I think, I think we had that on there.
Is it on there?
Correct.
It was said prior, so that's-
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah, so I think we would stick with that.
I'm just trying to think of ways to make it work to, because I understand the midnight closing. I'm also very pro-business, I want them to stay open until two. But, you know, when I hear there are things that are out of their hands, that makes me want to close at eleven or twelve.
Right.
You know, if you have that philosophy that, well, things, things just happen, well, then let's just close early.
Right.
If, if that's the approach.
I think that was a misconstrued comment. Sorry.
And just to clarify again, that the changes with the access from Broad Street only, that's different since the license in 2016, or no?
What do you mean, what's different as far as this location, being a part of the two AM?
No, there were some changes to the access, not coming in from Easy Street.
Oh, yeah, so that was part of the 2016 license there, that was part of the conditions as far as keeping all access and so then it is essentially the, only the strip locations, you're coming in from Broad Street. And it's not the in-and-out, which would be on the Judson side of the, the location.
If there are no more questions from the board or the public, I'd close the public hearing. And is there any discussion or questions from the board?
I'm, I would say, I grew up, my parents had a restaurant there, grew up next to the Judsons, they were reasonable, and my parents had music and probably had times where they were a little louder than they should have been, and, and, you know, that stopped, and I think, you know, I would expect Sean would have to do the same thing. And if we get a complaint, we can always go back to twelve or one or eleven. So, it's, you know, if we get a complaint or two this summer, we can, we can change it then. So, I think, I would support going to two AM and with the understanding that you'll be in contact with them, that the Judsons are right, you know, they're a stone's throw, you know, they're, you can reach out and almost touch the building. And, and so you have a huge impact on a family that's been there for fifty years, whatever it's been. So, I think you, you know enough to be respectful. So, I, you know, so I would motion that we go till, you know, go till two, but be careful.
Are you making that motion or can I talk? Okay.
You can talk, yeah, you can talk about emotions.
Second for discussion.
Yeah.
So, I would agree. I think they give the proprietor the benefit of the doubt, because we did this very similar to Gaslight. We said, just work with your butters, work with the church, we're going to hope that you do really well, and then if it does go the other way, we can make a change in midsummer or next year, or, right?
So, my only comment would just be that if this happened in 2016 and there were concerns and complaints, then we waited three years and we're doing it back to two AM, we're going to get the same complaints, and then next year are we going to say, let's try it again? Or are we going to actually?
It was a one-year deal. They weren't in there in 2017, it was a different person, and then it wasn't occupied at all last year. So, it's generally with the neighbors, and the Judsons are very reasonable. We would just, we would speak about it and they had any issues, we dealt with it, so. You know, it was just a one-year deal, so this happened, I think, in July when it got approved to two AM, so it was a very short window of time, so to speak, so, you know, it wasn't an ongoing thing, yeah.
And this is something that would be addressed at, at the end of the year when we look at licenses and review licenses again?
It would, or if, again, if for any reason it became an issue early on, this is a lot earlier than we dealt with it at that time.
Okay.
So, we certainly would bring that up immediately if it needed to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if there's an understanding, I, you know, an understanding to respect your neighbors and this is, you know, a second chance at it, I think in that area it's really hard to define who's causing what noise sometimes. So, I think that, again, giving them the benefit of the doubt at the start and if it becomes an issue, I would agree with that, so. Is there, so we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero passes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we forgot to do the church thing.
That's my fault. I'll make a motion for the beet.
For the beet, yes.
Determination, termination of the premises license, so alcohol beverage is not, is not detrimental to the spiritual activities of the church.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh, thank you.
That was my bad.
No, that's good. Okay, we are opening a public hearing to consider increasing the town of Nantucket ambulance rates, rates.
Good evening. Put a proposal in front of you contacted by our company that does our billing for the ambulance. They suggested a rate increase relative to other rating or rates that they're collecting currently. I'm proposing a ten percent increase on our ambulance rates. The last time they were adjusted were three years ago. This adjustment would bring us half of what they suggested. I think it's a, it's a very considerate number to go up at ten percent. The larger increase being the ferry service that was added in 2016. That number is a larger number because it actually reflects what it cost us as the town. Payroll is about twenty-five hundred dollars of that total number, including the people, the members that go over, as well as the staff that we would have to recall possibly to cover the station and protect the island. So, that's why that number's so high there.
On that note, on that specific number, is that reimbursable if someone is required to take the ferry? Do most insur, do most insurances cover it, or?
We don't normally get into doing this.
Right.
We've done it very few times and we've done it through a different process. Most likely, insurance could pay for it. The hospital, the way they have a contract, we have Cape Cod Ambulance now to do transports off island, that is not a billable number that they, that they do, Cape Cod Ambulance does.
Right.
does.
Right.
So.
Chief, when we had 8:50 in 2016 as the, as the number for the ferry service, was that just an estimate?
I believe that was an estimate when it was put through. That was just before I started at the deputy chief level. That was, I believe, estimated just for the cost of the ambulance and the boat ticket.
Okay. And then is this something that we're going to see increasing every three years roughly?
I think it's a good practice to look at it every couple of years to see where we're at, to make sure we're at appropriate levels.
Okay.
And the other, or the other option is just to put a cost of living on it and then, and adjust it as necessary. Because sometimes, the reason I say that is sometimes we get busy and you don't get around to doing it every three years and then you're out of whack, so.
That's what happened before 2016.
Yeah, so I think that's another way to deal with it.
And so what you're suggesting is that we would just assume that every year, every three years, that we're adding a cost of living?
Well, normally it'd go up, you know, 2.5%, 3%, some amount, you know, every year and not have to.
Do one big thing.
Yeah, and then if it's, if it's too little, if you're going up, say, 2% a year and you really should have gone up 2.5%, you can adjust every three or four or five, but you're not falling really far behind.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
Yeah. Any more questions? This is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And any discussion from the board?
I heard everything I needed.
Okay. No further discussion, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero passes. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the town manager's report.
Okay, the first item, while Steve is still, don't sit down, here is an update about the Advanced Life Support Ambulance Service Program, which is underway in the, in the training phase. And we got a really nice email from the owner of the company that is running the paramedic training program. And I wanted to just read a couple of things that that person said in his email. "I have been privileged to be a part of the educational process for the group selected by you for the program. They have overcome a great deal and have worked extremely hard to complete the program. The effect that they have displayed is consistent with professional individuals clearly set upon a course to complete something that will benefit their community at large. I am proud of the hard work and effort they have exhibited and they are indeed a credit to your department and the town of Nantucket." So I would just wanted to mention that because that is a real nice thing for the town of Nantucket. And I wanted to acknowledge Steve as well. He, through his leadership, this program has finally come about. He talked to me about this 20 years ago or so, and it's finally coming to fruition. So it is really something for our town and community to be proud of. So, thank you. And I think Steve was just going to give us a little overview of what's next and sort of the timeline and any other updates about the program.
Thank you. Thank the board for their support as well because, you know, you were a big part of making sure all the agreements were in place, as well as town administration and Greg and Brian and finance. You know, we're doing this all together. And this is a 20-year program start. It was more than 20 years ago when I was traveling back and forth to the Cape and I got my paramedic. And Glenn, who wrote the, the email, was my instructor at that point in time. And for him to say what he said in that letter was really cool. It was really nice to know that the, the six people that just finished the classroom portion, from September until three weeks ago, three days a week at a minimum, eight to four upstairs doing training, whether they were on shift or not, the dedication to that was really, really large. So they finished those classroom hours now. The first two people have started their clinical sessions. That's about 400 hours they'll be doing in hospital settings. They're really excited. They've started their first IVs and give their first medications, you know, in the presence of a nurse in the ER over at Cape Cod Hospital. So that time will be going along. They'll be doing those either here on Nantucket or on the Cape. But they're starting on the Cape to get that first experience. We've also already started to engage the hospital in talks about our licensing for ALS. And we're moving forward on that to figure out exactly how the program's going to work and any stipulations with education or everything else. So I anticipate on sometime around July 1st, putting in that application to the state, which will be a very large step as well. And that hopefully will be there about the times that the six students will be starting their ride time on the ambulance services on the Cape, which is the final step before they test, so. Hopefully, one year will be ALS and we'll be charging forward.
Great. I know that was something that was a huge factor in our negotiations, so I'm just really glad to hear that it's started and that it's going well. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Information Technology Department update. From time to time, we have department heads come in and give a little bit of an update about their department, about projects underway, projects that are going to be getting underway, and some of the initiatives that have been discussed here at the board level. So Karen McGonigal, our chief technology officer, is going to take us through an update. This is something that former chairman Bridges has been asking for.
Good evening. This is my first update to the select board since starting at the town last July. This year, I've spent my time trying to observe and evaluate the department functions and focus on improving services for the town departments, as well as upgrading the Munis financial system. Excuse me, allergies. This year, the IT department is in the middle of upgrading the Munis financial system to version 2018, which is the most recent version available. The project's currently in process and involves multiple steps to ensure a successful software upgrade while maintaining data integrity. One of the first steps was to configure and implement a new forms library. The forms library consists of documents such as purchase orders, invoices, and those types of forms that the various departments utilize every day. We then migrated production data into a test environment. And right now, we are fully evaluating the data integrity and functionality of all modules in that test environment. Once that's been completed, we will then migrate all of the data into the new production environment, which follows completion of all, successful completion of all of these steps. The timing of that will happen pending when it's, when Tyler Technologies, the vendor, is ready to do this upgrade, as well as taking into consideration our close of fiscal year and roll over to the new fiscal year. So we'll have to work with finance department on that. The next item that I want to talk about is our EnerGov ePermitting project. This was a project that had been begun several years ago. And this year, I formed an ePermitting steering committee to evaluate the project and strategize on how best to move forward. The steering committee looked at EnerGov and where the project was in, in relation to its development, and we decided to move forward with the Tyler product. Committee is chaired by myself and consists of members from administration, finance, and various departments in the town. Due to the cost of the project and the significant staffing resources that are involved in implementing it, we, I divided the project into two phases. Phase one kicked off last week with a three-day kickoff meeting. The first day consisted of an all stakeholder meeting in the morning with an introduction by our Tyler Technologies project team that was onsite for the three days. This included the IT steering committee, the EnerGov steering committee, excuse me, and the IT department stakeholders, as well as members of the various departments that we are focusing on. The energy level was great and the, the comments following this presentation were very positive. We spent the next two and a half days breaking out into departmental teams, working with EnerGov and the IT department, to begin defining and designing the department permits. We're focusing on health, sewer, and the plus departments for this phase one. Phase two will focus on the citizen self-serve portal, online payments, and any department permits and licensing functions that were not addressed in phase one. And we're hoping to start that in FY 2020, shortly after phase one ends in late October. So this will probably start sometime after Christmas. The citizen self-service portal will allow our constituents to engage in the permitting process from whatever device they have online and also pay for their permits. It will not eliminate the required hearings and in-person meetings that each department has for their various permitting processes.
Karen, a question?
Yes.
Phase one, so what will phase one do if there's no citizen self-serve until later? It just kind of gets it set up with the health sewer plus?
Yes. Can I get my water?
Sure.
Phase one is the design, development, configuration, and implementation of all of the permits and the underlying workflows. So the foundation of the system is in place. And the department staff who maintain and manage the permitting process will be able to enter the permit data directly into the system. So if someone comes in with their information, they can have entered then, or they can hand everything over the counter and then start that process.
Right.
So it'll be a manual process for the internal departments, but until we get the citizen portal in place.
Instead of right now looking at 25, you know, folders and a folder and a folder to find something, it'll be in a system and?
It'll be in the system, yes. And because we will eventually be able to make some of this information public, so you could look up what permits might be drawn on your property or your, your property that are but yours, you'll be able to, but that's, would be in phase two.
Yeah.
But this builds that foundation. Right now, we're in the process of migrating 18 physical servers in the 4FG data center into a virtual environment. What this means is that we will have 18 file servers that reside on a single large piece of hardware, but they will appear to the user as an individual distinct machine. This is a cost-effective solution. It saves space in our data center for any application servers or document servers that we are continuing to keep onsite, physically onsite in the data facility, rather than migrating into the cloud. We're also putting in a redundant installation at the Wanta Water Company data facility, which will provide us disaster recovery and backup capability for our core systems such as Munis. I'm adding a 10-gig connection between these two facilities that will provide extremely timely data transfer and recovery so that if, in the event of a disaster, we would be able to recover our core systems in approximately two to four hours. IT governance. One of the items that the CTO was tasked with when I came on board was forming an IT governance team. And this was in response to the Plant Moran data assessment, IT data assessment in, of 2016. This team will develop processes and procedures for IT projects and town-wide projects that may have a significant IT component. We selected Plant Moran to facilitate and guide this team and get us started, and we have had several meetings, and our next one will be on June 3rd. The team consists of myself and senior management from administration and various town departments, so it's a town-wide initiative. We will be utilizing a project portfolio management software called Team Dynamics, which we are currently implementing, to evaluate, review, approve, and track all of these projects. Team Dynamics is a collaborative effort between myself, Greg, and Chuck Larson that will also be utilized for all town-wide and enterprise projects, not just IT. So this is a, an overall, an overall software application for the entire town. I don't have a separate slide about this, so if you have any questions, you can ask them when I'm done. Laserfish document management. We're in the process of implementing a centralized document management system in collaboration with administration. We're in the configuration and implementation phase. This will expand upon the existing installation that the town clerk's office had been using for archived documents. So we are familiar with this product and it's very useful for us. Right now, we have agendas and minutes live internally and that will be made public in the very near future. The system will eventually hold all archived town documents in a central and searchable repository. It uses OCR technology so that even a scanned document or a PDF will be searchable. So if a constituent or you or anybody wants to search on a particular topic, they can do so. And it's not just going to find what's tagged in the title of the, of the document, but also in, on the content. I have Mike Alvarez here tonight to answer any detailed questions that may come up. Same thing goes for the website. Mike is here to answer any additional questions that I might not be able to. We launched our new website in September. I'm sure you've noticed that it's much more updated and current-looking. This is another collaborative effort with town administration and the public outreach coordinator. And website is an ongoing collaboration. It's a living, breathing application that is always being updated, improved, and content is continually being added and refined. Our website is our window to the town and to the world. It's our first line of communication when people search for us. And so it's our intent to always keep it as update, updated and as relevant as possible. In closing, like I said, the IT department is working to improve town services and increase our network and system reliability and provide quality customer service. As I move into the end of my first year with the town, I'm looking forward to completing some of the projects I summarized for you here tonight, continuing with some of them through the next fiscal year, and beginning some other exciting projects for next year, one of which is to increase the internet bandwidth significantly so that we have better internet service throughout the town, and also to provide fiber access to DPW and several other town departments, including the airport. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
I just have a couple. You guys know I love to nerd out on this kind of stuff.
Of course.
The Laserfish, when you said that would be searchable, like PDF searchable, and if we can get every document that we have, I just, that's, I mean, people who really like to do the research, Maureen, I'm sure you're very excited that you can spend your weekend searching things from the 40s, 50s, 60s, 80s, right?
Exactly.
Because we don't really have that access right now. You have to almost call the department and they have to kind of go look through file folders. And so that's, that's a really great technology that we can add. Is that similar to what we were looking at years ago, Libby? Iron?
Iron Mountain.
Iron Mountain. It does the same thing, but it's a different?
Sort of. It's a different, it's a different technology, I believe, but it's sort of the same concept.
And I'll let Mike take over from here.
Okay.
Yeah, well, specifically as to Laserfish, it is currently live to the public right now on our website. We don't have a link going to it just yet. Florence was on vacation. But otherwise, yeah, no, everything is live right now. It's just an archive of agendas and minutes of now defunct boards that we have digital records for. And we are in the process now of getting more and more from just the website and, and then archive, any digital stuff we already have archived within our network, starting to make available. And this is going to make things a lot easier when it comes to public records requests, which we've been getting more and more of. So, you know, now if someone has, you know, a question about, you know, this lot and parcel number came up because of some zoning thing at, you know, town meeting, you know, 2016, they can search it and they can find out every single time it was brought up at a board or a committee. And it's going to be completely searchable and you can see who's there and what was said. So everything's going to be there live on the internet. Most of it, or a good portion is already.
That's amazing. That's going to be fantastic.
I bet it can't search the proprietor's records. I know she put them in, but the handwriting is impossible even to read.
Well, we're?
Can't read it?
Well, right now, our, our next phase, which we were just doing a walk-around Well, right now, our next phase, which we were just doing a walk-around today, in fact, on, is to scan the restaurant, restaurant stuff, excuse me, the health department files, as well as natural resources and HR. So a lot of those I have handwritten, just signatures and so on. It's going to do as much of a recognition as it can. The key thing, though, is the number recognition. So what we want to get is, if the form says, you know, map 42, parcel 121, that's the important part, because if you're searching for that map and parcel, you'll get a handwritten document, as long as it's able to recognize those, and that's the technology we're working with, yeah.
All right. Another question. What was the timeframe for, and I won't hold you to this, for the customer side of the EnerGov, the phase two? Was that 2020, 2021?
Okay, well, phase one is currently being, our complete schedule is being developed right now with the EnerGov team, and we're hoping to be completed with that sometime, like I said, mid-October. If that happens, we should be able to start the phase two right after the holidays in January, and that will probably be another six-month process. So it could potentially be completed in FY 2020. It could also extend into FY 21. I'm hoping to have it up and running as quickly as possible. However, we want to be complete and accurate and make sure that it really does what we needed to do and have it be a success right out of the gate. And I forgot to mention earlier, when I was speaking about EnerGov, that I really want to give kudos to Linda Rhodes, the department manager, and Molly Sprouse, one of my technicians, who have given many hours of talent and time and blood, sweat, and tears on the first iteration of this project, as well as the current one. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
I just have a question about the hard files. Do they just stay where they are?
So that's, pull this up. So hard files is actually something we'll be going through. For legal reasons, we're going to have to have certain, depending on, you know, the actual form, we'll have to have them available. But the ideal situation is, we'll have them all digitized. If someone comes in, requests a printout, then yeah, go ahead, we can print it out for you, or here it is online, you can print it out there. Anything that's current will be mostly handled through EnerGov, so if you're going through any sort of licensing, permitting kind of stuff, that'll be done through EnerGov. The laserfish portion is more the archive. So some of it, we're eventually just going to turn over, maybe say, an Antico Historical Association, do you want these? If not, maybe they get shredded. That'll be a decision we make on a case-by-case basis, but, yeah.
There's also, not to interrupt that, but the state has a request process to destroy public records. There's a retention schedule, and there's a specific, again, request process. Some records cannot be destroyed, and others, there's just a timeframe, and some are just simply not permanent, and you can get rid of them as you can.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I said one last, one last comment.
Absolutely.
I just, I urge the select board to continue to support IT. I mean, we put a lot of time and effort in bringing in a CTO, and Karen's being able to do things that the IT department couldn't do, because they're just keeping us running and safe and protected. And so I just, whether it's capital, whatever comes up in the next year, I'm really encouraging town administration and IT to keep going, but we need the support from the select board as well.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the monthly town management activity report. I don't usually go through every item here, and I won't do that tonight, just highlight some of the major items. Town meeting, as you know, and the election have concluded. We spent a lot of time leading up to the town meeting and the election, doing public outreach and all manner of meetings about that. As a follow-up, you have a joint meeting with the finance committee scheduled for May 13th, and that will be a kind of a, you know, I think we've done this every now and then, but it's always good to look back and see what worked, what didn't, what can we improve next year, what do we want to put back forward or not, things of that nature. And I'm also, I've got a meeting in a couple of weeks with certain people from the Affordable Housing Trust and other staff to start talking about laying the groundwork for the $20 million spending plan for the ballot question that passed. We've got some plans, reports, and studies that are underway. Some of, this is not everything here, but these are some of the things that are coming to the board soon and/or are being discussed actively right at the moment. The plus operational review is on the board's agenda for May 15th. We'll have a presentation by our consultant at that time. I think that everyone's had additional opportunity to review that report, and it'll be available shortly. The coastal resiliency plan is in the process of being finalized. We hope to have a draft ready for public review shortly. I think that what will end up happening with the coastal resiliency plan is that it will be something of a draft or something of an outline, and the committee that we've talked about will really, along with the coastal resiliency coordinator, once that position is hired, will take that plan and vet it and engage more community outreach with it and really get it more into the kind of shape that I think we all want it to be in. We have some conferences coming up. One is sponsored by CZM, one is sponsored by us, and those are happening in June. There'll be lots of public outreach about them. One is sponsored by us, but it's through a grant that we got from coastal zone management. These are just listed in your packet. We have monthly meetings internally about the sewer master plan. That's well underway. We're meeting with the capital program committee in June to talk about the sewer projects that are going to be coming up. There's going to need to be an update to the capital improvement plan for those projects. The strategic plan, I think you all know, we're doing a kind of a mini retreat in June to look at the plan, update it, modify it, add to it, take away from it, whatever you'd like to do, that'll be facilitated as well. I have on here the host community agreement for Act Natural presented to the board April 24th. That is a tentative date. I have been in communication with Act Natural about the agreement. We've given them a draft. They are reviewing it. I'm just not sure it's going to be ready back from them for that meeting, but it'll be, it'll be happening soon. It'll be before the board soon. Spring roadway projects, I think you all painfully know about those. I don't even want to mention them. Surfside Crossing 40B, I don't know what to really say about that other than the hearing is closed, and we're still, we've still got some outstanding issues with the sewer that are being worked on with our engineers and the developer. We are waiting for information from the developer at this point. E-voting, we talked about at one point. The downtown sidewalk improvement project, we talked a little bit about earlier. We've got some projects that are underway, the harbor master building design, the old fire station reuse, short-term and long-term. Senior Center, you're going to be hearing more about the senior center's status on May 8th. Island Home, we're having a charrette kind of a thing sometime soon in May, I believe, and some of you have gotten invitations for that. The town pier is underway with the redesign, rebid, and the floating docks, I'm told, we're either going in today or sometime this week after having been repaired over the winter. I'm going to be reviewing with you the 2020 annual town meeting timeline sometime in May. And good news, on the personnel side, we filled our real estate specialist position with Ken Bogrand. He was here earlier. He'll be here next week, because you've got Real Estate Wednesday. We've managed to fill our treasurer position. Thank you, Brian, and thank you to the firm we used for that. The assistant town manager for administration, we are working to fill that, and on that, as you will recall, the staffing study recommended two assistant town managers, one for special projects, one for administration, and Greg is going to be filling the special projects position, and we're going to be advertising, we are advertising now for the administration item. And so Greg is not going anywhere, in case people get panicky about that. The coastal resiliency coordinator, I didn't have that on here, but we are advertising for that shortly. We have funding for that position in the next fiscal year, not readily available right at the moment, but we're hoping to get the ad out within the next couple of weeks and get that underway, so we could hopefully hire somebody shortly after July 1st.
Thank you. Moving on, do we have any committee reports?
I have, I have an update that I moved from last week after our marathon meeting. I went to the Sustainable Communities Conference in Cambridge on March 29th, and it was, it was really interesting to see what other communities are doing. There were presentations on energy, on hazard mitigation, on the MVPs. A lot of it had to do with communities that were already green communities, and there was a lot of, you know, really sort of almost eight years now of follow-on, once they've become a green community in 2018, sorry, 2010. Communities like Cambridge, Newton, Arlington, Milton were some that stuck out, who have municipal buildings that are LEED certified, that they're really looking to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions, and a lot of that is coming from, they have individual plans. So Newton has a carbon neutrality 2050 plan. Salem has a 100% clean energy resolution, a climate change adaptation plan, and a sustainability, energy, resiliency committee and coordinator. Arlington has a sustainability action plan, where there's photovoltaic insulation on all schools, and they go for LEED silver for all the buildings, and their HVAC is all replaced with infrared. So really looking at, within a community and with municipally, how to reduce greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions. Cambridge really stuck out. All municipal buildings are net zero, so net zero, you might be familiar with it, but it's where the energy produced by, or used by a building is produced onsite. I also took note, there are a couple towns that have a stormwater utility fee, as well as they control their construction sites for stormwater management. So the concern is that on construction sites, you have a lot of compaction, and so it's easier for water to run off without control, and you have a lot more possibility for pollutants. So I thought that was something that to possibly look into a little bit more as we're looking into our stormwater management plan. And sort of on that same note, I participated in the litter derby. About 100 people participated, 24 teams, and I just have a couple numbers for people. It was an amazing amount of trash that was collected. The participation was also incredible, but the official numbers are 18 cubic yards of Nernic, and that's, just to give you an idea, my little truck outside is one yard, so it's 18 trucks of mine filled with Nernic, including things like 15 tires, three TVs, one washing machine from out by the beach, and then eight cubic yards of plastics, recyclable plastics, so that's a lot of the drinking. I noticed a lot of water bottles, classic, and then plates, beach things. It definitely changed, depending where you were picking up trash. Six yards of glass, six yards of aluminum, three yards of scrap metal, and six bags of compostable. So there was a lot to be cleaned up, and I think one of the things that you really notice in certain areas is that, as a windy island, just really trying to keep track of, keep track of our trash and not walk by it. I know I've walked by it before, but I won't again. So those are my reports. If there's none others, is there a motion?
Well, thank you for that. That was very interesting. I mean, just thinking municipal buildings and net zero and...
Oh, yeah.
Everything that other communities are doing.
Yeah. It was, there's, there's some good notes and presentations online on the Sustainable Communities website, and there's more than even what I went into. But they do very specifically have renewable energy action plans, looking at 2050 as the target for being completely renewable.
One thing that stuck out was the stormwater management on construction sites. That's, it's got to be somewhat, I don't know, it's an enforcement issue, but some kind of regulations on that.
I think guidelines, and so guidelines, how to deal with stormwater management, and then again, enforcement, and when there's a violation, because, you know, you see stormwater running off a job site, and it has whatever, whatever's on the ground at the job site going with it. So it is a little bit of a, you know, can we enforce it? But I thought it was a good point. And with a stormwater utility fee, what they do is they calculate the impervious surfaces, so they look at roofs and walls, and they calculate how much stormwater you're generating every time you have an impervious surface on a property, and then that ultimately becomes your fee, because the town now needs to deal with, with that stormwater, or you can also mitigate onsite. So it's really taking, you know, stormwater is that important, and it's really giving, it's important for environmental reasons, and then there are costs to the town as well, that aren't usually, that are borne by taxpayers.
That just seemed to fit in with where we're going with stormwater, with, I think we've put in, what, $3 million in capital recently?
Mm-hmm.
So it seems to kind of fit in as maybe a missing piece.
Yeah.
At some point in the process.
Definitely something to consider.
That's all I got.
All right. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Nice job, Madam Chair.